Good evening and welcome to the first meeting of the Greenwich RTM term 2022-23. My name is Tom Byrne, outgoing RTM moderator. Welcome everyone. As our first item of business, we will, I will welcome our new town clerk Jackie Budkins to come up and swear in any members who have not yet been sworn in. Jackie Budkins, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to start with, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut and that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the representative town meeting of the town of Greenwich to the best of your ability so help you God? Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you very much. Will all members present, please rise and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. As all members have received a copy of the draft minutes of our December 2021 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to the minutes of our December meeting? Hearing none, the minutes stand adopted upon unanimous consent. All right, that now brings us to item number two, the election of a moderator for the new term. As I informed our district and committee chairs, I had proposed to all candidates for moderator, the announced candidates for moderator and moderator pro tem, that we agreed to a set of rules to govern this election. I have informed, I have sent out the rules that all the candidates agreed to. I will summarize them, but we will need to adopt a motion to suspend the rules to adopt these special rules to govern the election for both moderator and moderator pro tem. And the rules that were agreed was that each, each candidate would be allotted a maximum of 10 minutes and that time can be used for nominating speeches, seconding speeches, or by the candidate personally. The order of address has been agreed to by, by the candidates for moderator. I have a list of the speakers, the nominator, seconders, for the two, for, for all of the candidates. After the nominating and seconding speeches for both candidates for moderator, the candidates themselves will be allowed to use their remaining time of the 10 minutes. We have to elect by a majority of members present and voting. And let me say on that, in an election under Robert's Rules, the proper form of a ballot is to list the candidates who have been nominated, list their names. And if you want to vote against a candidate, it's not a yes or no, you know, for, for example, we only have one announced candidate for moderator pro tem. It's not a yes or no ballot. You must vote for a nominated candidate. If you want to vote against someone, you must vote for someone who has been nominated and is on the ballot. And so, or you don't, you can elect not to vote at all. In determining whether a candidate has achieved a majority of the members voting, we don't count any abstentions. So if you don't vote, we're not counting you for the purpose of calculating whether there was a majority in favor. And I will call for nominations from the floor. If we had more than two candidates, these special rules provide that in the event of a first round of voting, no candidate has received a majority of votes, we would drop the candidate with the least number of votes and proceed to take an additional round of voting. So those are the special rules. If we do not adopt them, there will be no rules in effect on number of speeches, length of speeches. I do have lists if that were to happen. I, I know some of the candidates have up to 20 speakers ready to, to speak on their behalf. So I, it is my hope that we will proceed to adopt these rules, which are virtually identical to the rules we have adopted in the past when we anticipated a contested election. And that was in 2012 and 1996, the last time we had a contest for moderator. So is there a motion to suspend the rules and adopt those special rules to govern the elections? All right, it has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to adopt those special rules as I have just described. We can adopt this upon unanimous consent. If not, we'll, we'll need to take a record vote and a motion to suspend the rules requires a two-thirds vote and is not itself debatable. Is there any objection to adopting those special rules upon unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion to suspend the rules has been adopted upon unanimous consent and those rules will be in effect for items two and three. So I thank the candidates for agreeing to these rules. The, the agreed order was that Ms. Vulgaris's nominator and seconder would go first, followed by Mr. Rainey's, and then followed by Ms. Vulgaris, and followed by Mr. Rainey, who would be the last speaker. Mr. Collins, would you be able to be our timer on this? Thank you. So, so each side has up to 10 minutes and the candidates will take whatever time, you know, will have up to whatever time is, is remaining. So at this point, I call upon Joshua Brown of District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests. I'm here before you to nominate Alexis Vulgaris as the RTM moderator. And Josh Brown, I'm a member from District Four, now in my 15th term on the body. I've been fortunate to have served in four of the districts, working my way through gradually, been chair of multiple committees, both standing and special, giving me an experience and insights to good and great leaders. And to understand the work the moderator does in shepherding our body to its work, Alexis does what we need as a moderator. Alexis is a member from District Six. She moved to Greenwich in 2002 and wanted to get involved and serve the commuting, uh, community in a meaningful way. She's been a member for eight terms, been chair of Health and Human Services Committee for 10 years, chair of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee for six years, moderator pro tem for the last four, and was chair of the 2020 Special RTM Governance Committee, to name a few. I was fortunate to serve with her on the committee, the governance committee, and witnessed firsthand her leadership, her excellent organizational skills, her ability to work across all town departments and governing bodies. She's well-respected and welcomed in that. Her ability to challenge discussion constructively and objectively, getting those involved to speak up and be supported. She does great research and doing so with amazing energy and humor. She's helped lead the committee that we have served on in its outreach to RTM members, town boards and commissions, League of Women Voters, the public, which resulted in over 500 suggestions on ways to change our rules and what the RTM is. She helped our members organize them, enabled the debate spirited at times. We didn't always agree. Ultimately, 18 of the recommendations were presented, not all that she favored, and we adopted, the body adopted six of them. Our members know the results of her drive and her abilities to drive change. When moderator Byrne made it clear the RTM would continue to do its work during COVID, it was Alexis working very closely with the town clerk's office, the IT district leadership to adopt Zoom as the platform that we would hold our meetings through and developed a workable process to conduct our business, including a voting system that worked. Yeah, there was bumps in the road, but we did it. Many towns and cities reached out to learn, what did we do? How did we do it? It was unique, couldn't have done it without her. She led that effort. So here we are now to elect a new moderator. We need someone that embraces change, someone that embraces good governance, someone that inspires and enables all to be heard, someone that's willing to roll up their sleeves to do research and understand what's coming and get the right people at the table to help us do our work, someone who understands and supports and has evolved our rules in what we do. Alexis is that one. Please join me in voting for and supporting Alexis as moderator. Mr. Moderator, I nominate Alexis Vulgaris, RTM moderator.
Thank you. Collins, what was your time on that?
6:47.
What?
Sorry. Yeah, 6:44 is left.
6:44 is left. All right, so just over three minutes. Now, I did neglect to ask for any other nominations from the floor. Are there any other nominations from the floor before we proceed further? Hearing none, I will close the nominations for moderator. I know Mr. Rainey has, is, is also a candidate. Kimberly Blank? Is Kimber, she's online? All right, Kimberly Blank with seconding.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM and esteemed guests. I rise to second the nomination of Alexis Vulgaris for RTM moderator. I'm Kim Blank from District Seven. I've served on the RTM for 14 years and am in my, and am in my third term chairing the Education Committee. I first met Alexis over 15 years ago. We were both young parents bringing our sons to a toddler class. And I wish I could say I had the foresight back then to recognize there was something special in the way she used her glue stick that told me she was destined to be a town leader, but in truth, I didn't. Instead, what I saw was a very smart person who was new to town and eager to immerse herself in her new community. Over time, Alexis and my paths continued to cross in many capacities. We served on the PTA Council together, where she chaired the Healthy Schools Committee, and on the High School PTA where she ran the Student Employment Services. She stood out as someone who always advocated respectfully, but was unafraid to voice a dissenting viewpoint. I've really gotten to appreciate Alexis's talents as we've served together on the RTM. We worked together on the Community Development Block Grant Group, which she eventually went on to chair, and on the Governance Committee, which she also chaired. In addition, Alexis, as moderator pro tem, has always been my first call when I have a committee chair question regarding process or just want someone to help me think through a tricky issue. I can say without hesitation that Alexis has all of the qualities we need in our new moderator. First, and this is the primary part of the job, she can run a meeting. She is very knowledgeable about parliamentary rules. She's efficient and cognizant of people's time. Other than Tom Byrne, I think she's the only person on this Zoom or in the room who's actually run a full RTM meeting before. Second, she doesn't just know what the job of moderator entails, she knows what all of our jobs entail, and she can be an excellent guide and advisor to committee and district chairs and new members. She has a breadth of experience within the RTM that is unmatched. She's chaired committees and special committees, been responsible for the operational side of our full RTM meetings, and even literally helped to write the rulebook as chair of the Governance Committee. Finally, and most importantly, she has the personal characteristics that we need in a moderator. She is open, accessible, and responsive. Anytime I've had a question, I've always received a fast call or email back from her. She's flexible and open to change. Getting us through the past two years has been a Herculean effort, and she deserves credit for adapting as quickly and frequently as the job demanded. She is extremely smart, but even more importantly, she has common sense and good judgment. Being moderator requires the ability to both follow the rules and to read the room. She can do both. Most importantly, she has the temperament that we need in a moderator. She is diplomatic, she is respectful, patient, and above everything else, Alexis is fair. Let's face it, if we don't have 230 characters among us, we certainly have a large number of strong personalities. That's part of what makes us good representatives. Alexis has the patience to deal with all of us and the finesse to do it respectfully and impartially. I know our esteemed body will be in good hands with her as we chart a new future. I urge you to vote for her as our next moderator. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins? 3:08 left. All right. And on behalf of Brian Rainey, Jane Weisbecker of District Nine. Ms. Weisbecker, could you turn on your video, please?
Sorry, I'm here. Hi, Tom, thank you. Hi, I'm Jane Weisbecker, District Nine member since 2006, vice chair of Legislative Rules, and also on Claims Committee since 2006. Tonight, we have two exceptional candidates for RTM moderator. While I will consider myself fortunate to serve alongside either, I'm here to nominate my friend Brian Rainey. Brian is a data architect by trade and has an expansive working knowledge of virtual technology. He served on the RTM Tech Committee that made recommendations several years ago for upgrades such as electronic voting. The upgrades were skipped, but I recall Brian telling me then that the RTM would be best served by preparing to change with the times. His words came true in 2020, when the pandemic hit and the Zoom age started. Brian has been District Nine's interface, our tabulator, our meeting facilitator, and general go-to guy for the past two years, spending countless hours helping us to function. I've also observed that Brian understands the RTM rules like few others. He has two young kids, but devoted personal time along the RTM, not only study Robert's Rules, but pass a test qualifying him for membership with the National Association of Parliamentarians. He spent a quick study on the RTM's legal front, serving last term on LNR with me. There, he consistently jumped into the weeds of complicated legal issues to, as he put it, "cut through the red tape." We lawyers often appreciate that. Brian also has great ideas about how to improve the RTM. If elected, he intends to establish regular office hours to assist people drafting RTM call items. This should reduce the revolving door of items that come to us in poor form and end up on multiple calls. Brian also seeks to add more consistent background information to items on the call, such as legislative history and first and second read status. To conclude, Brian's approach to the RTM is forward-thinking, sensible, and driven by a natural desire to master and improve the way things work. He supports making Zoom meetings a primary, permanent RTM option, and I fully expect that he will spearhead the task of improving the RTM Zoom platform. Oddly, within the past week, I've seen him labeled a conservative, but I've never known him stuck to one political side, and to this day, I'm unaware of his political party affiliation. My opinion of him is that he consistently acts in the best interest of the town and will serve as an able and accessible moderator. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Collins? 7:14 left. All right, with the seconding speech for Mr. Rainey, Henry Orpheus of District Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Henry Orpheus, vice chair of District Seven and currently serve on the Finance Committee. I rise this evening to second the nomination of Brian, Brian Rainey for the position of moderator. I believe the role of the moderator is to fairly manage RTM meetings in accordance with the rules of the RTM, the Town Charter, and Robert's Rules of Order. Brian has studied Robert's Rules and taken the test on those rules needed to become a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians, so he has prepared himself well to handle the role of parliamentarian that the moderator must fill. Since the pandemic began, Brian has consistently supported the use of Zoom or hybrid meetings to allow members to participate in RTM meetings. Such an approach makes sense, since remote meetings provide a risk-free way for RTM members to participate during this difficult time, and in my opinion, the remote option has not detracted from the ability of the RTM to conduct its business. The RTM's use of remote meetings is also consistent with the approach taken by businesses around the country to continue operating while protecting the health of their employees. I believe remote participation in meetings should continue until the vast majority of our members feel safe returning to in-person meetings. We are fortunate to have two excellent candidates tonight to consider for the moderator position, and I respect them both very greatly. I believe Brian has the skills and temperament needed to be moderator of the RTM. At the current time, with coronavirus still a major concern for many of us, I believe Brian is the best choice to lead us. So I second the nomination of Brian Rainey for the position of moderator. Thank you.
5:30 left. All right, at this point, we will now hear from the candidates themselves. Alexis Vulgaris, you have three minutes and eight seconds.
Good evening. Josh and Kim, thank you very much for nominating me and for your generous comments. I hope everyone has had a chance to review my announcement of candidacy in the call packet and have a good sense of my many years of RTM leadership experience and qualifications. To put it into numbers, I've chaired well over 100 committee meetings. I've delivered over 150 committee reports before this body. I've prepared the call for the last 32 full RTM meetings, and yet, befitting my leadership role, I have expressed my opinions on issues before the body less than five times in 16 years. Let me just briefly add a couple of thoughts on what I'd like to do for you as your next moderator. First, about meetings. These past two years have put the RTM to the test, and I'm proud of the work that I spearheaded with the dedicated efforts of so many of you to make it possible for the third-largest legislative body in the United States to seamlessly transition from in-person to virtual and hybrid meetings. As we move forward, I am committed to seeking input on and developing approaches to making these kinds of meetings even more efficient, engaging, and participatory for you and our constituents. This includes exploring ideas about further streamlining the voting process and the transitions between speakers, including exploring electronic voting options, allowing people to add or remove themselves from the speaker list during the meetings, and about maintaining a remote option beyond the end of the pandemic. As moderator, I will call on my relationships and experience to facilitate the exploration of ideas and the understanding of constraints. Ultimately, however, any decision on meeting format will be voted on collectively by you. The second thing I'd like to talk about is relationships. Over my 16 years on the RTM, I've had the opportunity to meet people with extraordinary backgrounds and diverse perspectives, to build strong working relationships over the many years with members of the RTM as well as other town departments and boards, and to welcome and help eight new classes of RTM members. It's these interpersonal relationships that will allow me to bring us together to solve problems, to ensure that you are respectfully heard and fairly treated, and to make your RTM experience both productive and fulfilling. In short, to moderate. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Rainey with five minutes and 30 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd also like to thank my nominators, to all those who encouraged me to run, especially my fellow members of District Nine, but most importantly, my wife Kim and my children for their support. For those of you who don't know me, a little background, I was born and raised outside Detroit, went to Northwestern, lived just over the border in Porchester for 18 years, but Greenwich is where I shopped, dined, and worshipped. My wife is a townie from Cos Cob and a graduate of Greenwich High. We live in Pemberwick on the west side of town, have two young children who attend Glenville Elementary. I work as an IT data architect, and surprisingly, it's very similar to my learning journey with the RTM. And I cannot stress this last one enough. I am unaffiliated and always have been, try to understand issues from as many angles as possible. This is the first time since 1998, 26 years, that we will have a contested vote for moderator. This is an historic opportunity for us to consider what we want in a moderator and what direction we want the RTM to take. I bring a fresh perspective on this, how we transact our business, asking questions and questioning assumptions. It also means I remember my first time speaking before 229 other folks who did not appreciate my point of view. It means that I figured out how things should work on paper and run headlong and how they work in practice. Know that the focus, time, and energy I put into those committee assignments and advocating for issues will now go into RTM processes, advocating for the RTM's authority, and defending your rights as members. You've heard that I'm now a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians, which has the appropriate acronym of NAP. Not to mention, it's a mouthful to try and get out. I did pass their test. It was a monitored closed book test on the rules. I work in IT, so we look for different certifications, and this seemed the most appropriate one, and a clear demonstration of knowledge of the rules. I'm committed to defending the rights of the membership. That's one of the primary purposes of the Rules of Order. I believe that you can't play the game if you don't know the rules. Those rules need to apply consistently to be fair. It's not a place for creativity. In my platform, I mentioned collegiality. I want to make sure we uphold that, to borrow from John Mistracchio, formerly of District Ten. We are all just neighbors coming together to make decisions for the town. We need to remember that and live it in all of our interactions with each other. No one should feel belittled for expressing an opinion or participating in debate. It's difficult enough to get up here and express a view that is popular, let alone one that is not. Accessibility, I view the moderator role as a facilitator, helps us get our business done. You heard about my suggestion for office hours from my nominators. Transparency, this may be a difficult thing to hear, but I don't think we communicate well. We have many channels available to us in the modern world, email, news flashes, web posts, and so on, but the principle is simple, share. I want to get to the point of being accused that we over-communicate and then dial it back. I want to stop playing telephone among the committee and district chairs, hoping they share the information. You heard about what I'd like to do with the call, put some comments in there so that we know what we're dealing with. Efficiency, we can work smarter, not harder. My time on LNR was instructive, they do a lot of dirty work. Thank the members of your district who serve on LNR. Nothing burgers, this is my term for items that do not actually do anything or do not do what they set out to do. Why are they a problem? They lead to substitute resolutions, sometimes before we've even had a committee meeting. We're debating something that hasn't been widely circulated, or worse, wasting time debating the original resolution, which will never come before us. I hope to eliminate nothing burgers and reduce sponsor-initiated substitutes by pushing review upstream before it ends up on the call. Call it a quality check. Resiliency, we need to be able to continue remote hybrid meetings on our own authority. Meet this way only due to state statute, which expires in April. It needs to be in our toolbox. Health concerns can arise, facility issues can arise, weather issues. The moderator cannot simply make this happen. It requires a change to the RTM rules to protect the rights of members so they can fully participate when remote. I would see consensus from the district and committee chairs to move forward on this and the best method to do so. As an aside, this issue of remote hybrid meetings seemed to cause quite a flutter of emails in recent days. I'd point out that this is just a single item in just one of the five planks of my platform. If I move the needle on this issue, that's great, but there's a bit more that I proposed here. In summary, I think I'd bring a fresh perspective of this role with a solid grounding in rules. I would strive to improve our resiliency, efficiency, transparency, accessibility, and maintain our collegiality. And I've given you specifics on how I would accomplish these things. Finally, let's keep this all in perspective. We are all just neighbors coming together to make decisions for the town. And I salute Ms. Vulgaris for all of her work. She has been tireless in making this happen, so thank you.
All right, I thank all of our speakers and congratulate our candidates for stepping forward and giving us a choice. So it is now time for us to vote. The form of the vote, as I said, is the ballot has the name of Alexis Vulgaris and Brian Rainey, and you may vote for one of those or, or decide not to vote. Any questions on the form of our ballot? All right, well, I ask our district tabulators to please tally your vote. We will, of course, await the We will, of course, await the result of the vote before proceeding further. Are we on? All right, I'm informed we have some latecomer. Is there just one? All right, is Neil, I was informed Neil Katon needs to be sworn in. All right, so we'll bring up Neil Katon Swerman so he can cast his vote, and then we'll announce the result. Mr. Katon, you need to accept the invitation to become a panelist. All right, I think we're all set. What is the name? And Joe Benoit, we're going to bring up to swear in? All right, we have Joe Benoit and Neil Katon. Is that right? All right, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna start. He's on, they can see him. Okay. Yes, I'm gonna go, okay? All right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the representative town meeting of the town of Greenwich to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
All right, thank you. Have you made your votes known to your district tabulators? Just District Eight and Five. All right, we have the result of the vote on the election of moderator for the new term. Alexis Vulgaris, one fifty. Brian Rainey, sixty-seven. Alexis Vulgaris is our new moderator. First of all, congratulations, Brian Rainey, for giving us a choice. Thank you very much. Alexis Vulgaris. It is my distinct privilege to congratulate you on your election as moderator of this fine body. I also want to thank you for everything you've done for the body and for me in the past four years as moderator pro tem. I can't thank you enough. During my tenure as moderator, I'd often speak to different groups and be introduced by many different people who all seem to say the same thing, that this person has a job of herding cats. I never saw it that way, although I will admit sometimes I felt like a lion tamer in a cage with lions. And we know lion tamers have something to try and control, a whip or a gun. Well, the equivalent for you is the scabbard. And I proudly pass this on to you, wish you all the best, and offer any help that I can in your tenure as moderator. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Brian Rainey for everything. I know it's probably been as hard for you these last few days as it has for me, so I congratulate you on putting your team together and for everything you've done. So thank you. Thank you, Tom. I'm honored to be standing before you this evening as a seventh moderator, the first woman and likely the first independent candidate to hold this position in the eighty-eight-year history of the RTM. This would not have been possible without the help of a broad coalition of people from almost every district, across party affiliations, promoting my candidacy to members over the last forty-eight hours. I'm a huge fan of Harry Potter, and it was like having my very own Dumbledore's army. You have proven the power of individual relationships. Rest assured, I will be reaching out to each of you personally to express my gratitude. But now it's time to move forward together as the nonpartisan body that we are. One issue that is of interest to us is the format of our meetings, which I discussed in my candidacy speech, but more concretely. I've already received a number of suggestions directly from members, and I'll be reaching out to district chairs shortly to gather a broad cross-section of perspectives. I've also initiated discussions with the town clerk, information technology department, and legal department to understand the procedural, technical, legal, and budgetary considerations that will inform our search for solutions. As promised, any proposed changes to our meeting format will be decided by your votes. There is much work to be done this term, and I hope we can all work collaboratively and listen and respect each other and our varying points of view to pass legislation that makes sense for our community. We need to stay true to our roots, which are that we are nonpartisan and elected to serve and consider the needs of all Greenwich residents. I realize that in the current political climate, that isn't always easy, but we will be better as a body with the potential to accomplish more if we exercise patience, respect, and kindness when working alongside one another. There are also two other people that I need to thank. First, Tom Byrne, for his mentorship, support, and encouragement you have shown me over the years. For those of you who know me, I like to ask questions, lots and lots of questions. And he's always answered them in a way that provided little breadcrumb clues so that I would dig around and in the process, learn even more. He made every effort to educate me about all aspects of the RTM, often sharing some obscure fact that he would later ask me about, I think, to see if I was paying attention. He is remarkable. He's a remarkable parliamentarian whose shoes are likely impossible to fill, but I'm going to try my best to carry on with the exceptionally high standards he maintained for the last twenty-six years. So thank you very much for everything you've done. And lastly, but absolutely never least, I would like to thank my husband Emin and our two boys. When I first joined the RTM, our boys were one and three, and my husband worked long hours in the city, often traveling to far-off lands. And yet, he always valued and respected and treated my quote-unquote volunteer job just as much as his own very successful career. And none of my professional or personal successes would have been positive, would have been possible without him and our children, and I thank them all from the bottom of my heart. And with that, we start the new twenty-two, twenty-three term with the election of item number three, or we'll start with item number three, the election of our moderator pro tem. So thank you all. Item number three now comes before us, the election of a moderator pro tem. At this time, we know there is one candidate interested in running for the position. Are there any other candidates interested in running for the position of moderator pro tem? Hearing none, I will now close the Florida nominations, and we will proceed with the announced candidate. I believe it's Randy Caravallo.
Yes.
District, oh, there you are.
There I am.
You are free to.
All right, congratulations, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you.
Fellow members of the RTM and guests, my name is Randy Caravallo from District Eight. It's a great pleasure that I would like to nominate Catherine Le Balbo for moderator pro tem. Tied to this community through generations, Catherine and my own roots reflect an upbringing of commitment and dedication that is uniquely Greenwich. Whether it is in government or outside of it, she volunteers to make Greenwich our home, a place where everyone knows your name and is glad to see you. There will be work to keep the RTM running smoothly in these unprecedented times. She has proven more than capable and willing to provide that support. Catherine has qualifications that are vital right now because the RTM has to stay focused on the business of the town and maintaining its preservation and prosperity, when needed, and without being asked, Catherine will roll up her sleeves and raise her hand to get the job done and done right. She puts the welfare of the town's residents first, whether it's calling town seniors to check in, organizing hot chocolate and fire truck rides, or helping RTM members join finicky Zoom calls. She keeps an open mind to a variety of perspectives, respects and knows tradition, and works for solutions that bring better tomorrows. She knows the town. She knows the process. She works hard. With that, it is my pleasure to nominate Catherine Le Balbo as moderator pro tem this evening. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. To second the nomination, I'd like to recognize Don Conway out of District Two, please.
Okay, thank you. I do want to second Kathleen. She is a fantastic person that has worked very, very hard for District Two. She shows up at the meetings, and she knows what's on the call, and she understands it all. She also has helped a lot of us, including me, get through the little craziness of the Zoom business, and I really definitely appreciate it. I think she's gonna be fantastic, and I know she has the qualifications in case Alexis has any problem evening, some evening. I know Kathleen will be right there, and she can fill in without a snag, so I want to second her nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. I'd now like to recognize the candidate, Ms. Catherine Le Balbo.
Thank you and good evening. The role of moderator, to me, it's about service. It's about serving you, my colleagues, our residents, but at its heart, it's the love of democracy, fragile, messy, at times imperfect, but one that we're striving always to make more perfect and more representative. I just want to thank all of you who I've learned from, who I know will hold me to a high standard in this role for your mentorship, your continued mentorship, and your confidence. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. I know that you'll hold me to a high standard and keep me to it, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting card in the first column, Le Balbo, and proceed to poll your delegation? I'm gonna wait. Okay. So we have a very long tradition of inviting, while we are doing the moderator pro tem election, of inviting chairs, district and committee, to come before the body and introduce themselves and their officers for the term. So I'd like to continue with that tradition. Why don't we start with our district chairs first? I believe they're all on the panel. And we can bring them up, Jenny, and maybe we can just go in numerical order. So District One would be Frederick Lee. Okay, good. So if they want Frederick Lee to be followed by Willman Nissinovich.
Hello, this is Frederick Lee, District One, downtown. The chair is myself, Frederick Lee, Jr. The vice chair is Jason Bedhurst. Again, it's District One. Frederick Lee is chair. Jason Bedhurst is vice chair, and Lee Hongzeng is secretary. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nissinovich?
Yes. District One, our vice chair is Laura Gladstone, and our secretary is Prigati Soni.
Thank you. Adam Rothman, District Three, please.
District Three in Chickahominy, it's Adam Rothman. Our vice chair is Ed Lopez, and our secretary is Steve Rubin.
Thank you. Bob McKnight, District Four.
Yes, good evening. I was re-elected as chairman. Our vice chairman is Don Vidi, and our secretary is Lucy Von Brockel.
Thank you. Mr. Broadhurst, District Five.
Tom Broadhurst, Chair. I see France, Vice Chair. Kathy Whitaker, Secretary.
Colleen Jenkins, District Six, Old Greenwich. I was elected chair. Our vice chair is Victoria Martin Young, and our secretary is David Snyder. Thank you.
District Seven is Winn McDaniel. Oh, Henry Orfus. Ms. Orfus, would you like to give the update, please?
Yes, Winn is absent. Winn is the chair. I am the vice chair, and Debbie Applebaum is the secretary.
Thank you. Cheryl Moss of District Eight, please.
Good evening. It's Cheryl Moss, Chair of District Eight. Molly Salibi is vice chair of District Eight, and Kathleen Meyer is our secretary for District Eight. Thank you.
Betsy Fruman of District Nine, please.
District Nine, Glenville, Pemberwick. We also include Lion Farm West and Valleywick. I am, Betsy Fruman is the chair. The vice chair is Carol Zorilli, and our secretary is Jonathan Shankman.
Thank you. Jane Sprung, District Ten, please. Oh, Ms. Sprung, I believe you should be receiving a prompt that tells you to accept the panelist invitation.
Yes, thank you so much. Congratulations. From District Ten, Brooks Harris is the vice chair, and Jude Collins is the secretary. Thank you.
District Eleven, Susan Fahey.
Eric, yeah, congratulations from us, too. I am the chair. Dana Newman is vice chair, and David Oliver is secretary. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob May, District Twelve.
For District Twelve, oh my God, Craig Amundson is our secretary, Barbara Hinman is our vice chair, and I was re-elected chair.
Why don't we move next to our standing committees? Appointments should be Bob McKnight?
Yes, thank you. I'm Bob McKnight, the re-elected chair. Our vice chair is Lopez, and our secretary Jude Collins.
Thank you. Budget Overview Committee, Lucia Jansen.
Hello.
Yeah, you.
Budget Overview Committee, Lucia Jansen, Chair, Vice Chair, Margaret Hethelmann, and Secretary Dean Goff.
Thank you very much. Education Committee, Kimberly Blank.
Hi, congratulations, Madam Moderator. I was re-elected chair. Steve Rubin from District Three is our vice chair, and Susan Fahey from District Eleven is our secretary.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Brooks Harris.
Brooks Harris, Chair of Finance Committee. Henry Orfus is the vice chair, and Aldo Pasquarela is our secretary.
Great. Allison Solar with the committee that's near and dear to my heart, Health and Human Services.
Hi, congratulations, Alexis. I'm Allison Solar, Chair of Health and Human Services. Bill Gavin is our vice chair, and Ellen Murdock is our secretary.
Thank you. Peter Berg with the Land Use.
Good evening, and congratulations, Ms. Moderator, and good evening, fellow members. The Land Use Committee re-elected Ellen Brennan Galvin as vice chair, Lucy Von Brockel as secretary, and I was re-elected as the chair.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Legislative and Rules.
Congratulations, Alexis. I was re-elected as chair of Legislative and Rules. The vice chair is Jane Weisbecker, and we have three co-secretaries, Scott Calm, Ed Lopez, and Jay Teaven.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Ms. Catherine Le Balbo. Come on up, and you gotta say who you are. No exceptions.
Catherine Le Balbo, Cos Cob, Park and Recreation Chair for the second term running, and now hopefully we'll see. Oh, my officers, sorry, are Liz Eckert, who is our vice chair, and Catherine Ashworth, who is our secretary, second year running. Fabulous.
Michael Spilo, but I don't, is Craig Amundson is gonna be delivering his update.
Hi, congratulations, Alexis. This is Craig Amundson, our chair. We elected Michael Spilo, re-elected him for this role. I was elected vice chair of this committee, and Philip Dodson was elected secretary. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Richard Newman, Town Services Committee.
Madam Moderator, I was re-elected as Chair of Town Services. Paul Olmstead, District Five, was elected as vice chair, and Josh Brown, now of District Four, is my secretary. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kimberly Salib of the Transportation Committee, please.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Congratulations, Alexis, for the Transportation Committee. We have Anthony Moore as our vice chair, Jan Rogers-Niffen as our secretary, and I was re-elected as the chair. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of our chairs and officers, and I look forward to working with you over this next term. Do we have the vote for, is the vote ready? The vote is not ready. Okay. Welcome aboard, Ms. Le Balbo, with a vote of two hundred and six in favor. Would you like to offer a few words? Would you like to? Okay, okay. Fantastic. Okay. Before we go into our final item, which is our only item, and item number four, I would like to recognize Bob McKnight, who has an announcement about some of the special committees that he and his committee group will be recruiting for.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and congratulations. I am Bob McKnight, Chair of your Appointments Committee. I would advise all interested RTM members, the Appointments Committee is seeking new members for the Claims Committee, the Labor Contracts Committee, and the Housing Trust Fund Advisory Council. Your Appointments Committee will interview prospective candidates in February for placement on the March call. We have set a deadline for submitting your CVs of all those interested on Friday, January twenty-eighth at twelve PM noon. Briefly, the Claims Committee has unique power to speak for the entire RTM and approve appropriation of the BET for payment, compromise or settlement of legal claims against the town upon recommendation of the town attorney. Our Labor Contracts Committee informs and advises our body with respect to approving contracts for our town's employees and serving as a liaison to the town's negotiator to communicate the RTM's inclinations for concession or rejection. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Council was recently established to reserve and create new affordable rental and ownership housing in town. Each committee and council requires unique skill sets and time requirements, which have been emailed to each of you for examination of possible interest. Further information can be found on the RTM website. Also, the Inlet Wetlands and Watercourses Agency is seeking to fill vacancies, and the RTM's harbor management liaison position is open to all members interested in applying. You may contact me or the Appointments Secretary Jude Collins. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, that brings us to item four, which is our only item on the call and the adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-three RTM calendar. And if I may just inject a bit of RTM history, this is informally referred to as the Mistrakiya Resolution, and I would note that Mr. Mistrakiya is apparently making the rounds with you, too, Mr. Rainey, because you referenced him as well. Exactly. So, John Mistrakiya is a long-serving retired member of District Ten, and a number of years ago, he came up with the great idea of looking at our calendar and amending it at the beginning of the term rather than getting into the term and having to amend on the fly. So, the dates that you have before you are the dates that appear by virtue of the RTM rules, which indicate that for a specific month, a full RTM meeting might occur on the second Tuesday. However, our rules do acknowledge that we can amend those dates if we have a conflict with a religious holiday or a public school break. So, I believe, Mr. Bergweger, may we have the resolution for item four, please?
The, I don't have it in front of me, but it basically says that we're going to adopt the dates listed in the call, as it appears on the call.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Second, the item has been moved in second, and it is now before us. It's been referred to all committees, but Mr. Bergweger, since you, well, I don't know if you're there anymore, but if you are there, would you like to give the report? Yep, thank you.
Legislative rules met last Monday. All districts were present except District One. We discussed the fact that the date for April two thousand twenty-three, April tenth, will take place during the school closure for the spring break. That means if we are using the schools, we're going to have to open them up and pay the custodians on a date when the schools will ordinarily be closed. So, we voted to change, to amend the motion to change April tenth to April seventeen. We, that was eleven zero zero. We did make.
Thank you very much.
We did note that the the previous week, which will be when the committee statistics meet, will also be with when the schools are closed. So, we figured we'd take care of what we're going to do sometime in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Let's just go alphabetically. Appointments Committee, Mr. McKnight?
Yes, our vote was unanimous with the amendment taking out the tenth of April next year.
Thank you. Budget overview committee, Lucia Jansen.
Yes, we noted the discrepancy with the April school schedule. Other than that, there was no other issue.
Thank you. Education Committee, Kim Blank.
Yes, we also passed a twelve zero zero with the amendment to the April meeting. Our suggestion was that we continue to hold committee and district meetings the week of the third, as scheduled with districts with the Passover holiday can, you know, figure out their best time to meet.
Thank you. Brooks Harris, Finance Committee.
Finance was aware that other committees were considering some conflicts. We didn't have those specifics, so we voted on the item as proposed, and we approved it twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Allison Solar, Health and Human Services Committee.
Hi, we voted on the amended dates, both moving April tenth to the seventeenth for the school break and April fifth to the sixth for the district, making all the district meetings on that Thursday for Passover, and our vote was twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Peter Berg Land Use Committee.
Land Use met last Monday. We had heard about the proposed change, but we also didn't have the exact details, and so we voted for the item as it appears on the call, twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Committee, Ms. Le Balbo and our moderator pro temp now. Park and Rec took the item up as it was presented on the call. The vote was twelve zero zero. Craig Amundson, Public Works Committee, please.
We did take up the item. We did not officially vote on it because of the change, but we had a unanimous decision to support the change from the tenth to the seventeenth.
Thank you. Richard Newman, Town Services Committee.
Town Services noticed both the April fifth Passover conflict with Wednesday meetings, district meetings, and the tenth. So, we voted twelve zero zero on an amended item, moving the fifth to the sixth and tenth to the seventeenth.
Thank you. Kimberly Salib, Transportation Committee.
We voted seven zero zero on an amendment to change from April tenth to April seventeenth.
Great, thank you. So, it sounds from all of that, it sounds like we have two amendments, one to move the April tenth twenty-two-three meeting to April seventeenth, twenty-two-three, and then the second one was, I heard from Town Services and a couple of others, to move all of the April fifth meetings to April sixth. Ms. Blank, would you care to offer the initial April full meeting on behalf of your committee?
Yes, and just a point of order. I don't think that the resolution mentions the committee meeting, so I'm not sure we need to take.
No, just for you. Okay. Richard will offer that. I'm saying if you could do the.
Okay, I was just making the point. I'm not sure we actually need to take up that second amendment, but the the, we moved that the April tenth, twenty-two-three meeting, be moved to April seventeenth.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. Debate on the education motion to amend the April tenth meeting and move it to, of twenty-two-three, and move it to April seventeenth, the following Monday. That motion can be adopted upon unanimous consent. Is there anyone that objects to that? Hearing none, the education motion to amend may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Mr. Newman, would you care to offer the Town Services motion that you're making to amend the district meeting the week prior?
Sure, in observance of Passover of April, on April fifth, two thousand twenty-three, district meeting should be held on Thursday, April sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second debate on the Town Services motion to move all of the April fifth meetings to Thursday, April sixth. Again, this is something we can adopt by unanimous consent. If anyone objects, no objection. That motion has been adopted upon unanimous consent. Further debate on item four as amended. District tabulators, please mark your voting cards. Item four is amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. I have the results from item number four as amended. Those in favor, two hundred eleven. Opposed, zero. Abstaining, one. That item has carried. And I just would like to remind everybody that item five was withdrawn as well as one last update on what the status is for applicants for our special committees. The Labor Contracts Committee needs nine people, and at the moment, we only have one person that has submitted a interest. So, if you have an interest or affinity for our Labor Contracts Committee, if you could please submit a resume to Appointments, Bob McKnight, Jude Collins, and they would be happy to shepherd your application through. There being no further business coming before us this evening, the January twenty-two meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.